My note tonight. Aaron. About safety, Brian Shear. Welcome.
Thank you.
You have the floor. Feel free to introduce yourself and anyone else.
Yeah, Brian Shear, Director of Safety and Security. Uh, thank you for the second opportunity to come. For you, so Dr. Dan, thank you and board. Um, I have some guests with me tonight. And as you know, in the March study session, I had some guests there as well. So I've tried to mix it up a little bit. Um. Want to start on my right. Our brand new SROs for Bonnie Lake PD and Sumner PD. I'll let them talk about themselves and then. I'll introduce this guy next. I think you know Keith, but if you don't, I'm going to introduce him.
All right, uh, my name's Mike Gould. Um. I grew up in Bonnie Lake and went through Bonnie Lake Elementary, Lake Bridge Middle School and Bonnie Lake High School. It's funny that I come back for about 13th grade to be the SRO. Um, started my police career in two thousand eighteen with the King County Sheriff's Office. And lateral to Bonnie Lake PD in. March of twenty twenty-two, I have served as a patrol officer most of that time until. Uh, getting assigned to the school resource officer spot last year in March, so. Uh, have a couple of months under my belt. Um, haven't worked through the fall and winter months yet. I don't see them being as challenging as the spring when the kids get all excited, so. Um, it's a good experience. Uh, it's very much a different job than patrol. Um, a lot of relationship building and, um, you know, a hyper focus on dealing with juveniles, which can be. Really, really good and sometimes not, so. As, as we all probably know, but, um, yeah, it's good to be back and nice to meet you all.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm Brandon Anderson. I, uh, for Sumner PD. Um, the new selected SRO for Sumner. Super excited. I've been with Sumner. For, uh, just over five years now from patrol. Uh, I started my law enforcement career in two thousand twelve, kid at Taz County Sheriff's Office, so. Um, did about eight years in corrections, uh, working behind the walls with. Incarcerated individuals. Uh, I was a sergeant up at the Score Jail. So, um, three of those corrections years were spent teaching and training up at the police academy, running the Corrections Division. Um, training all the new COs coming in and out of the. Out of the jails and so, um. Kinda felt called to go to patrol and that's where I ended up and, um. SRO is always something that was on my mind as. That's what I want, because when I was working, uh, with inmates and stuff, I had a huge heart for. Reentry and, you know, trying to facilitate and implement. You know, whether it was, uh, jobs, treatment, housing, um, you know, and seeing the recidivism, people are like, ah, don't you ever get tired? You know, no, because one out of a hundred, that's. That's worth it to me, you know, and so my goal's simple, so just try to leave people, places and things better off the way I found them. If I can do that, um. I've done my job, so. Super excited to be here, um. And SRO gig is gonna be a. Very fun, exciting, yet challenging, like Mike was saying, um. Next five years, I'm excited.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, they're both doing a great job. He's got a week and a half under his belt, so he just got started. Yeah. As Mike said, he, uh, he got started last spring and I will say they replaced two great SRO, uh, Darren, uh, Wolf Schleter. With Bonnie Lake PD and Matt Watson, Officer Matt Watson down here at Sumner PD, so. Um, yeah, so thank you. And. You have Keith, uh. Cybersecurity engineer for Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, so you want to talk a little bit about your background?
Uh, my background before cybersecurity is I was an operations manager, uh, so I have a lot of experience with a lot of these. Security systems that we're implementing here and kind of unifying them all together. Um. Just a wealth of knowledge in IT systems, security systems, cybersecurity. Uh, so I'm here to lend some of that knowledge to the team. Already have a great wealth of knowledge on these systems and see if we can move things forward and secure our schools for the kids.
Yeah, thanks, Keith. Well, this will all kind of connect as we start working through here. Why are they here? So I want to start with our promise. Um, we really believe in our promise. It's really the heartbeat of our district. To know value, support all of our students, so just want to put that front and center before we get started. Oh, and by the way, that picture is last spring. Um, it was the culmination of our victory tour, which is a longstanding tradition. Um, Bill knew this well as high school principal and. And as an assistant superintendent and we, it's a lot of fun. The kids really look forward to it. This is a, a great shot, so. Share that with you. So our promise in action, what does that look like? So at the heart of this work, safety, um, I want to remind, um, everyone in the room that. Emotional and physical safety are at the center of our planning and prevention. So I, I think this picture kind of captures a little bit of what we might face in this area. Um, the mental, physical, um, physical safety is the planning and what we're doing in the schools. You have some of this material in front of you. But then on the emotional, the, the mental health side, um. You know, that's embedded in a lot of work that we do throughout the districts. I'll touch on those as we start working through the slides. You know about the Lhardrow? Forty-five thousand participants last spring. Uh, we had about eleven to twelve thousand in that range, um, that participated in that forty-five thousand, very successful. Um, great partnership with our regional partners and really, really proud of all the work that was done, um, in the district. With many departments, um. Dave Cuts, I see him over on the left here, he was a, a big part of that, that day. And so many others, so want to thank everybody for that. So, um. Safety's, uh, part of our future ready, right? It's, um, it's embedded in pillar B, safe culture and strong partnerships. Whole child, which is embedded in goal two of our strategic plan. Um, and then success for all, sorry, success for all and goal four, um, elimination of disparities and student access and success. It's also related to our policies, and so there you get a picture of all the policies that are related to safety. Um, just for your reference. And then just a bit of background, I, I did present this in March, but I wanted to show this slide again. Uh, safety is connected to our strategic plan, uh, just to reiterate that, uh, we did have a, uh, district-wide, uh, safety task force in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. I was part of that. That time was a, a building, assistant principal at Sumner High School. And, um, great experience, um, had a student with me who's a senior, who I think is at the University of Florida or Central Florida right now. Um, phenomenal participant. I think those around the task force would agree with that. His name was Nick. Um, and really provided a great, um, lens as a student to our work, but we had about sixty community members. Executives in the area, city officials, police, fire executives, some of our board members. Um, a lot of district staff and a lot of community partners were part of the task force. Out of that. Uh, there were recommendations. And one of the recommendations was. Your approval to work with I Love You Guys Foundation. Which is the center of, of much of the work that you're looking at in front of your, you know, um. And then, um, I. Was asked to be the Director of Safety and Security, so want to again thank, um, the board and. Dr. Dent for that opportunity. Um, it's been a, a lot of fun. Challenging, but, um, I'm very passionate about this work, um, and, uh, really. Privileged to, to be doing this work, so thank you for that. And then, uh, last year. The task force ended and we started the first year of our district safety advisory committee met twice, once in December, uh, another time in May. And we had four subcommittees, um, uh, that, that, um, worked. Under the umbrella of the district task force or the advisory committee. And, um, we're gonna do that again this year. So currently we're collecting applications from our community. It's posted on our website. We're gonna be pushing out an email here shortly to our principals just to remind them about that. We are taking applications till October fourth. So. And then. If you recall, last March, we unveiled the five-star safety plan for our district and. The bottom, um, star K-12 alignment was really the center of our work last year. Tonight, I want to highlight some other areas. Um, you're gonna hear about access. The safety hardening piece of technology, what we're gonna do in our schools with access controls and the different phases. That we're working through, so Keith's gonna walk us through that. He's also gonna talk to Spot Communication. Um, we just installed a brand-new radio, um. System, um, big undertaking, so he's gonna give you some highlights on that and how it's, how it's going. And. Again, partnerships right in front of us. Um, these are our partners and so many others, um, throughout our communities. We're really proud of that. And then we are gonna tou- touch on supplies. Because that's the, we're in kind of the second year, I call it, of. We've installed, now we're moving into, um, getting ready. In case we have to take care of staff and students for the next ten period of time, so I'll touch on that as we start moving through this. So. There it is. Um, standard response protocol is the work. It is the, um, the best practice. Um, safety response protocol in the nation. Um, there are others, but I would say this one's predominantly. The go-to, um, emergency safety response system. And it is, um. Falls under the foundation of I Love You Guys Foundation. I talked to you guys about that last March. Um, we piloted. This work, um, at Sumner High School for. Planning this for five years. And then it found itself in the task force. Here we are today, so just giving you a little background on that. Why? This resource? Well, one, as I mentioned, it's a nationally recognized best practice, uh, safety responsible, and so that's like. Key number one right there. Why would we do that? We, we believe in excellence in, in the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District, so we want the best. So we vetted it, looked at it, piloted it, um, and we really thought it was a, a very sound plan for our schools. Our plans are intended for teaching staff, um, and our students. Um. Our plans are digital resource, site planning and easy access. Um, they're repro- reproducible, so there's a lot in the safety powerpoints that. In the way of signs and other reproducible documents that. Those schools can, um. Go to and share, um, and, uh, and that's super important in, in a safety plan. And then finally, um, it, there are limited slides that have to be updated each year, whi- which is important, so that they're customized to each school. But the important part for you to know is that we're fully aligned. We're fully installed, um, throughout our district. So that's what this slide clearly talks about. Last March, we were in process. With pretty much all of these bullets, so I want to report to you that. The standard response protocol is embedded in our schools. It is active. It is out there. And it's being taught this month. To staff and students. Um, our tide is that by the end of this month, it'll be finished. The high schools, they might do it all in one day. What I mean by that is if you open up your brochure that you're looking at, they might install all that in the, in one day. They call it safety day. At the middle schools and elementarys, that's a little bit much. Um, it's, it's a, they don't, that's not the approach they take and which is perfectly fine. It's developmentally appropriate for each age group, so they might take a week to do it if it's at the middle school, or they may even take the whole month. Our type is we, by the end of September, we want to make sure all of our staff and students, um, know our safety protocols. We have an athletic plan, um, that also for our athletic department, district athletic department and, um. Right now, that's, um, primarily being showcased in our stadiums. And our gyms, okay? So you'll see a slide here in a little bit of what that looks like currently. We just unveiled their backpacks for the first time in district history. Um, we've tried it out at. Both of our high school football games and it went really well. Um, so thanks to the communications department and others for getting the word out, our coaches and our A.D.s in the high schools, they did a phenomenal job and getting the word out. Um, everybody I think is pretty comfortable with that now because of, you know, the concerts that you go to and games. So we're really just kind of, um. Joining the. The herd, I guess, with that, so we, we want to make sure our stadiums are safe. And that's really the why behind that. Here is central office, which includes several central office sites. We have a fully-aligned safety plan. So it's abbreviated from what this, it looks like in schools, but we do have a plan. And then we completed our all-hazard staff training, which was taught by law enforcement. Um, Brandon did not, I don't think, get to participate in the, the last ones last spring because you were still a patrol officer, but Mike was able to sit in. On, I think, three of them.
I think so.
Bonnie Lake High School, Crestwood. At any rate, um, took two years to do it. And it's a Pierce County training, um, it's called All Hazards. And so all of our staff, all of our buildings went through that, and so we feel really good about that. Okay. So now we're gonna get into the response protocol that you're looking at. If you want to look at your brochures in front of you, that's fine, but we do teach with symbols. And to remind you why? Because the littles. They don't have their language yet, right? Um, we have a lot of students that are ML students. Multi-language, they might have just arrived here from another country. And so symbols are important because universally we understand what a lock is. Um, hands out is modified lockdown, keeping the threat outside, evacuate well, go together, right? The green symbol and then shelter. Right? I think everybody, everybody universally understands what shelter in place would look like in a building. And then finally, um, the final symbol is reunification. And on the backside of your. Your staff companion guide. Um, we lay that out. Okay? And. With that, um. Well, I'll, I'll get to, uh, some pictures here in a second, but I, I do want to talk to you about this. Bill. Distinctively remember Bill and Mark said, Brian, it would be great if we could get that on the website. And so we put a couple of things on the website. We put the protocol on the website. It's under family protocol. So I put the tagline up there for our district. Um, Sumner SD dot word. Or slash safety. Um, hit family protocol and you will get to the standard renification protocol. Which you see on the backside of your scanning guide. And then we also have a video from the foundation, so phenomenal video, it's only four minutes, but. Bill's point in March was, wow, it'd really be great if parents could just look at that so they know what to expect when they show up to a site. So I really appreciate that feedback and listened to that, and we did put it into our, our website. And it also is in our safety powerpoints in all of our schools. So there's the protocol to the left. And the card to the right is what a parent would be arriving when they come to the site. If you're filling that out, we tear it in half. One half of it goes with the parent down to the reunification area, the other half goes with the runner out to our staging area to retrieve the student. So we can do the reunion with the parent guardian. This is a picture of what a standard reunification, um, looks like. So if you take all those. You see that it's kind of a diamond with the yellow. And there's an entry to the top, to the top, uh. Top left is where our parents come in. And then they circle around in the green arrows to the reunification with their card. The other half of the card goes with the blue runners out to the staging area with our kids and they meet up. At the end of that green arrow. And they're reunited with their parent. So all of our schools have this same format. The beauty of this format, just to remind you from March. If. Law enforcement were to come in and take over, we call it unified command. Um, they could move us. That happens a lot. In fact, the video that we showcased from the foundation is actually a site off a school site. It's in a warehouse, um, in that district. And, um, what's important about. Highlighting that is this. Right here, this, um, this is kind of a plug and play, right? You can take this. And you can overlay it to any site. You just have to do the details, right? When you get there, so, but it's, um, this is how we teach it. And we think that's a really important piece to our, our planning. And then, um, you're looking at this front and center, because you have this in front of you, but this is a picture of what. Um, schools have, all schools have this. As I mentioned, they're teaching us as we speak, and by the end of this month, um. Our, our tide is we want to have all these protocols taught. You'll notice in the boardroom. Um, to the right, you see the quick reference guide. You have that in front of you. We have these in place in our schools in a central office. So these are replacing the, the old. Um, Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Quick, Quick Reference Guide, and they tied to. Our plan. Which we think is important. The other thing that I just say before I move on is the pictures. The pictures are really critical, because when you're teaching littles, again. They understand pictures, and so each picture shows what the protocol is. So a- again, beyond the symbol, we're also trying to teach with, with, uh, some visuals. Cover this, I'm gonna move on that. This is. Be having everything done by the end of September. Shows a sample, uh, period-by-period schedule. We do this at the high schools. Um, they've been doing it for several years now, um, and it works really well, but this is something we would do at the middle school or the elementary. They have a, they have a different plan. Which is, which is great. We do share it with our first responders. Our first responders, um, have been invaluable, uh, giving us feedback, so they've vetted all this. That all happened last year. And I want to thank Bonnie Lake PD and Sumner PD for that work. Um, we also shared it with our advisory committee. Um, and we had district staff look at it, so a lot of feedback went into this before, uh, we implemented it. Mentioned that we're talking to students. Uh, we did have one student on the task force. And he gave us a lot of good information, um, the things to think about and. How a student thinks about safety, um, but everybody's being taught in our school trip. That's the important part of this slide. Yeah. And then parents, what goes to parents? Well, we're putting together a lot on our website that parents can go to. I highlighted some of that under the. The website and the tagline there under safety. Um, it's ever-evolving because that's what safety is, right? We don't sit back and go, okay, we're good. Because as we all know in this room, safety is a ever-evolving issue. For lots of reasons, and so we want to make sure that we're putting up information for our parents. Videos, links, um, having them see this work so that they know what to expect and they can have a. Educated conversation with their student and they come home at dinner or at breakfast. Or on the weekends. Okay, this is a little bit about what's going on, on the athletic front. I mentioned that we have an athletic plan with safety in place. And at the games, these are now post that sandwich boards. When you come into our games, the left, there's the clear bag. Um, requirements. And then to the right, what this does is, um, we do an announcement before the game starts. So we're doing it with football right now. And next year, we're gonna install basketball. Okay, so basketball, we'll see the right slide. We'll have that out. The left clear bag requirement, we're not installing that. With basketball next year. So we're gonna, we're piloting football right now, just trying to see how it goes, and it's, it's going really well, one game. But we, we feel good about that. Cross stream. Okay, long-term plans. This is a reunification bin. I have shared this in, um, multiples of presentations and the task force has seen this. So the goal by the end of this year or sooner is to have all these bins done. And in the schools. And, um, they will have in them, uh, vests. All the signs that are in their safety powerplants, all ready to go, so that if they have to pick up. And move to a different site, as I mentioned earlier, they can take this with them and they can set up everything, just like they were doing on their primary staging area at their school, okay? Bags, we're in process of purchasing seven hundred emergency bags. It's a standard bag for the district. We have about six hundred and eighty classrooms currently, so we're gonna get a few extra. But in that bag will be the basic, um, what we call. Emergency supplies. FEMA puts out a basic set of supplies. We want to make sure that all of our schools at least have the standard set of supplies. We're, we're working on that. Um, the big bag that you're looking at, um, we're gonna purchase, uh, sixteen of those, and that's gonna be a trauma kit. And then that, we're gonna give that to the nurse. I'm gonna work with our director. And we're gonna put extra bandages, a bleed kit in there, um, law enforcement carries, we just got a kit here at district. And so we want to make sure all of our schools have. Have what they need in case of a. An event at one of our sites. On the right, um, we are in process, Marina Tenay, who I know you know well. The two of us, along with Dr. Mint, are working, um, with both of our cities. Working with an architect, um, working with, um, a consultant to. Get these containers set. As you guys know, we have to get permits and, and now, but our goal is by the end of the year, we're hoping. Um. That we can get, uh, these, uh, container at each of our sites and we can store our supplies, uh, for use at our school. We're also just, the, the next few slides are gonna just be miscellaneous things, just updates. So I want to thank the district, um, they approved, um, us some work that was done last year with Mr. Cuts and myself. We, we traveled the district. And our goal is to look at how do we secure our staging areas for all of our buildings. So that was approved, so thank you, board, and thank you, district, for that. Um, we have started that project. So Mr. Cuts, thank you for that. Um, Donald Leisman is complete. Um, we got a brand-new gate up there, um, and so it makes the site very secure. And the next, uh, project is Bonnie Lake Elementary, so if you've been to Bonnie Lake Elementary, you. Know that you can come in from the back. And there's a drive and it doesn't have a gate on it and it's not. Um, what we want, so we're, we're going around the district. This is just a highlight of two schools, uh. Securing these sites, so we're in a good place. The goal is to have these done by the end of the year. We are working with a regional group, um. Here in East Pierce County, it's called Epic. I've mentioned this before, um, this group is all about emergency management, so we have law enforcement, um, partners that sit on this committee. Um, we have our city emergency managers, Raging Krill and Evan Brazidas, both sit on this committee. I sit on the committee. And our little hard work that you saw last year is because of. The great work of Epic. And we are currently, uh, working with Epic to explore. And Bill, thanks for coming to a session last spring. We did a presentation to the five superintendents that. Five school districts and their superintendents that, uh. Um, participated in Epic. They came to, um, watch the presentation. About the work that we're doing here in Sum. And so we're meeting next week, actually, um. To decide if the Epic Committee, which is six cities. Five school districts. Um, are gonna adopt one model. And the model potentially could be this model that you're looking at. And so you think about the power of that for law enforcement, first responders, they don't have to guess. In each of their districts that are responding because they cover other districts, um, besides us. They, it's predictable, it's consistent, and for them, it makes it a lot easier. And for the emergency managers, um, the same. So. I didn't link it for you, but I, the last tagline there is, um, they already have identified in the six cities, some, um, regional reunification sites. So to highlight what some of those are. The p- paragraphs. That could be a site. The Regal Cinemas up in Bonnie Lake. Because you could get a lot of books in there, right? Um, that's one of the sites, and so there's a ton of them. I won't spend time doing that, but if you're interested in learning more about that, happy to share that information down there. Getting to seventy-two is the work this year for Epic. And what that means is if we had to take care of staff and students for three days. Think of a regional earthquake, cascade event. And we're literally cut off from roads and. We're, you know, relying on potentially air support, law enforcement, first responders are gonna be very, very busy. We want to be prepared in our, uh, districts. To take care of our people. And that would be our staff and students, so that's what we're getting to seventy, that's our theme this year. And we're doing a lot of work on this. We've already had three meetings about it, so we'll continue to, um, update you on that. Okay. Uh, Washington Department of Health just came out with some new updates, uh, earlier this month, and so we want you to know on this slide that we are posting that on our district website. We're on it. And it's called the Safety Study Hall. Okay, so if you haven't seen this, um, it's, um, embedded in House Bill twelve thirty. And this slide here just shows you what we're doing in the communications department to make sure that it's available and, um, our parents can see it at our hangings. Okay. You've heard from these guys and who they are. I'm gonna transition now, um, and, uh, Mike and Brandon are gonna go first, but before they get started. I just want to talk a little bit about, uh. Our safety and security fo- focus here in the district. We are so proud. In our district. That we are taking a proactive approach with safety and security, and we're doing it district-wide. We have a longstanding. Um, relationship with law enforcement and all of our first responders. I've been in the district twenty-six years, starting my twenty-sixth year. And when I arrived here in ninety-nine, we had CSOs. The district that came from did not. Um, it was a smaller district, so give it that, but we were in a huge district at that point. We were maybe seven thousand kids, if I recall, um. We were maybe seven thousand kids, if I recall, um in that year, and I was so blown away when I walked in. As a administrator from a different di- different district to see in my building, which was Summer Junior High, when I arrived. Did that we had CSOs. And they play such a critical role, role in our buildings, building a relationship with their kids, supporting our admin teams, our deans. And helping with the queuing in the morning and afternoon and all the things that they do, they're amazing people. I know you've met some of them, but we're just so fortunate, so wanted to highlight that, and then. These two guys um are SROs, we are very, very fortunate um to have a great relationship. With Bonnie Police Department and Sumner Police Department, these two young men are uh. Really just pillars in the community, I mean, they really are, when they walk into our schools, the kids eyes light up. With these two guys showing up, so um we're excited um to have these two guys on board. And I just more excited about just having this partnership with um our our two cities, so. Wanted to say that, and I'm gonna turn it over to these two gentlemen.
So you have to hear this, so Officer Anderson and I were, I mean, we did not plan this, right, but I have to tell the story again, because it's just. Um, it speaks to the temperament of relationships and how kids are excited to see police officers um at school. A little girl at Daffodil, little dolphin, got off the bus, she's probably in first grade, maybe second. Um, she gets off the bus and she sees Officer Anderson and she looks up, you know, like. And she tells him that she wants to be a police officer when she grows up, so he takes out a badge, because you have these little sticker badges, right? That day, but I didn't get one, and he he reached in and he gave her a badge and like she put it on her coat, it's like this pink puppy coat and she was so proud.
Yeah.
And she just walks inside and it's those relationships when we start up early. They develop great relationships with law enforcement for life. So it's um, it was just so precious to see the interaction and uh the way she reacted to uh Officer Anderson, so yeah. Again, thank you City Summer for that partnership.
Well, a funny twist to where you just shared, it, the same experience happens at the high schools. When they show up, the high school kids go, they want a sticker. They're eighteen years old, they want a sticker. So, yeah. Alright, you guys have the floor.
Well, you know, it's really, it really is a privilege to be part of a, you know. Part of the school district now, essentially, you know, that really takes a proactive approach like Brian was saying, because that's. So much better and reactive, and uh, I mean, we've seen it with industry and stuff, so it's it's awesome to see, you know. Just the, you know, the proactive approach that you guys have and then the partnership, how valuable that is, so uh we're both. Honored to be part of this, this group, be here at this board meeting, and yeah, we got a, we got a great team. Um, it's been a privilege already working with Mike, the little time we worked together, you know, just kind of bouncing ideas. We're both in it together, learning as we go, we're new to the position, but. Um, understanding just the role and how important it is about the CSOs and SROs is important because. Um, last year I did watchdog, which is like uh dads that go into schools and kind of like the eyes and ears and just. You know, helping out the CSOs. And that was really an eye-opening moment, because I saw people like Johnny Moore, you know, uh. Just the way he's able to manage and communicate with these kids and have the relationships he has, the rapport he has with these kids. It was super inspiring, you know, and it ain't kind of very similar to like you see how people manage a pot of seven inmates, you know, it's a. Very complex dynamic, but it takes a set, a certain person, a certain skill set. Certain character attributes, you know, and I think the same thing goes for CSOs and SROs, they have to have. That specific energy, but the cool thing with our district is that, you know, the CSOs and SROs really have that. Um, cross-functional or cross-sector uh collaborative partnership. And they work hand in hand together to achieve the same mission, um sure, we're in uniform, they're, you know, in uh. Professional casual clothes, but we all were there to make sure the kids feel known, valued and supported. But we're there ultimately to provide safety, security, service and support, you know. Uh, wi- within our different roles and responsibilities, but it really is a partnership and a team effort. Um, and it's really cool to see that, because you see a lot of other um other districts and there's kind of a divide and separation. Not here, but the summer Bonnie Lake School District. Uh, anything to add on that?
Uh, no, I can take this next one. I wanna skip down to the the second part there, um what what the SRO provides, um. Being through the Summer School District myself and going back to all of my old schools that. Still have some of the same, you know, layout, a lot of them been remodeled, but uh, you know, some of the same layouts, but. It's just really a flashback, and I remember, you know, Darren was my SRO when I was in high school, and I specifically remember him.
And that's you, I think.
Uh, no, it's a huge impact and in 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 just the the uniform we wear, it it just brings a. A different uh type of attention, um and the words we speak have more or different value, I'll say. Um, some like it, some don't, but um. You know, the the relationship building is huge and um on several occasions where. Um, I get called in for, you know, those those talks we gotta have with. Some of the troubled ones, um we were literally just right there, um I'm thirty years of age, I was in high school twelve years ago and. And I can, I can tell these kids like, listen, I'm, I've been in your seat, because I've literally been in your seat, like. You, you, I'm telling you, I I sat right there, you know, I was Panther, Viking, um. You know, it's it's a great way to connect because um. You know, we have, we have experience, we know life works a little bit more and it's, it's really important to share that influence with them, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, you know, and I'm like thinking about like, when, on the board, I knew it's, it's not just a free position, like, oh, you're. Uh, we're gonna put this guy as the SRO, no, it's a, it's an important position, because SROs are there, they are carefully vetted and selected. Um, specifically trained, that's important, and you know, properly equipped, um there's lots of smiles, stickers, right? And fist bumps, so high fives, whatever, but you know, it's a, it's an honorable and rewarding. And sometimes challenging position, but those are the three uh, three elements that kind of make up an SRO being a mentor. You know, an informal counselor and very seldom, uh, yeah, we're sworn law enforcement officers, but enforcement's a very small part of it. Uh, so with that specific training that we go through, uh there, there's actually a legal mandate. Uh, that requires that all CSO, so R C W states, safety and security staff, which is CSOs. Um, some have SSOs but and SRs, and they go through the same training, and it mandates that each. School district um provides training for staff, uh specific training. And basically, um while there's discretion and autonomy and the kind of how that's developed and implemented from the school district. It's very specific on what's being trained, so these are the thirteen modules on the slide here, um I'm not gonna read them all, um but. These are thirteen modules that I think we all in this room can say are very valuable and very uh important, and so this is kind of the training that we go through.
Brandon, where does that training happen?
Yeah, so that training happens, so the CSOs, again, that partnership and that collaboration between. SROs and CSOs, we we meet once a month every uh. Yeah, once a month with the the team, we have training, we have briefing, kind of discuss what's going on. And you know, where we can, you know. Find areas of improvement, but we also train together, you know, we're, we're doing it, so I haven't been to a lot of them. But you know, I see that a lot of the training and everything, it's, it's a collaborative effort and it's a shared process. And um, the R C W outlines what needs to be done, so. The S five, the summit, that was an E S D that worked in partnership together, so you have a lot of different agencies that came to. Together and put on that one, and then Andy, I had the privilege to work with Andy, Brian. Uh, Jeff Engel, who retired as a CSO for Bonnie Lake, uh, or sorry, uh for Summer High School, but he was also my deputy chief, and then also. My deputy chief, Andy McCurdy, uh, we had the privilege to work together, and he knows I love to just create stuff, and so. We just finished putting together a toolkit for uh. Um, our peer support team and stuff, so I'm like, let's, let's do this, and so, how about you already have S five, we'll do S four, right? So we created our own training program, and it's a two-part thing, a two-part process here. Uh, you've got the field guide, which is essentially a toolkit, a training manual. Um, for the CSOs and the SROs, it's got a key information for each of those thirteen topics, not all of it, but. It's a lot of the key stuff in there, uh it kind of illustrates, you know, the roles of an SRO, the roles of a CSO. Um, the mission statements of our agencies and, you know, the mission we're there to uh implement, and so. There's that portion, but then there's a second part, which is the journal portfolio, which is individual workbook that each CSO and SRO. Um, kind of takes ownership of and develops themselves, which is kind of cool. Uh, what I like about that is it's more of a problem-based learning uh way of doing it, so it does give. You know, the individual learner that autonomy to build their own product, basically, essentially, I, their playbook for their own success. And it captures, you know, their learning, it can be seen as a uh. You know, a showcase of their professional development and what they've learned, and also shows areas where we can add to it. But it it's, I think it's an equitable approach, that's kind of how we looked at it, like, how can we do this, so it's equitable. Uh, it's collaborative and it's a living document, right, we don't get stagnant, you know, being a, somebody who's super passionate about training. Uh, things aren't, we don't just accept things, oh, that's the way things always work, no, things evolve, things improve, and so that's what this is supposed to be. As you go through the thirteen modules, uh we kind of have a D P A format, which I'll highlight here in a minute. But it does, it meets the compliance of the R C W and then. We're trying to, we're still, we're in the process of developing more additional training for uh each of those subjects. So uh, the journaling for growth, so you know, that journaling piece, you've got the field guides, toolkit, but the journaling piece, uh we do have a. Paper copies, we have electronic copies, whatever somebody wants to do, but we take people um from that. Looking at the issue and like describing what the problem is, what the issue is, um identifying, you know. The topic area, so with each of those thirteen modules, uh. Myself, Mike, the CSOs, all the new SROs and CSOs, when they go through this, they first describe the problem, look at it. Identify the problem, then they hit, they personalize it, right, they say, okay, so here's what I know, here's what I need to know. So what training knowledge and experience do I already have? Um, within that topic, you know, whether it's restorative justice, whether it's, you know, crisis response, mental health issues. And so then you personalize that, and then uh. From there, you take all that information, you're like, okay, I need more information here, that individual training, and then you create your own action plan, right? This is that playbook part where it's like, here's all the information, you know, now how do I make it transformation, so. How do I take the information, apply, and create that action plan, you know, so there's this training coming up, you know, I wanna go attend that. Here's some of the things I've dealt with with this last month, you know, some uh pretty challenging uh issues I had to deal with. At this one school, you know, how does that fit within here, and it's a journal, so I think a huge advocate for journaling. Not just for this, but just personally, so I think this is a great approach, and that's kind of how um. SRO training, how we're doing, so, did I miss anything?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay.
Mike, did you wanna make any final comments?
I think you hit it right.
Alright. Awesome job, so Keith. Keith is gonna talk about our safety hardening to the schools and the radio installs, so you you have the floor.
So phase two of uh, the opening of our entries and access control systems. This thing is actually, the date has been pushed back to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, that is updated as of this morning and talking to the contractors. This project, though, is one year ahead of time, this project was not slated to start until summer of twenty twenty-five. Um, technology, business services and leadership, we did such a good job on um. Being good stewards of public funds, we had money from our previous levy that we were able to start these projects for the year. So we pushed everything ahead by a year with access control as well as the radio systems. So, hardening our entries at our buildings, security vegetables, all schools right now have. Uh, doorbell camera systems that are all functional, uh we maintain them on a daily basis. Um, access controls, we have access controls at all of our schools throughout the entire district. Uh, we're in the process of updating some of those buildings to a newer system, so that we're all under one system. Um, to manage, repair, reduce cost of ownership. Um, and just manage those alerts and unify all these systems together. That brings into phase three, phase three is really the focus of unifying all of our systems, so we have. Camera systems, we have access control systems, we have P A systems, we have new radios, we have. Um, new bus radios, we were working on um student uh. Uh, bus passes so that we can monitor how they move throughout the district. Um, now we unify all those together and configure all these alerts um to trigger the other systems. So that's really what phase three is gonna be about is is unifying all this together. Bringing it all into a mass communication system that can really work for us as. We manage schools and our SROs and CSOs and safety and security, um they're gonna get alerts pushed to them. Um, they're not gonna have to look at film, the system is gonna be able to identify things that happen on campus. Uh, I'll give you an example, something like someone climbing over a fence. Uh, the camera system can recognize that, trigger an alert that pushes out to um. A- administrators or district uh building leadership. Uh, that footage can also be pushed out to their new radios that were implementing throughout the whole district. Uh, so they'll get footage right on their radio and they can initiate things like a lockdown from their handheld radio. They can initiate a lockdown from push buttons within the schools, they can do it from a cell phone app. Um, yeah, future iterations of this will be things like integrating our phone system. Integrating in-class audio systems so that we can trigger lockdowns, modified lockdowns, shelter in place. Um, another feature of that system is we can also automate calls to nine-one-one. Um, with a pre-reported message that will say, you know, X Y Z event has happened at this school. So we can really start to automate a lot of that. Um, because when something's happening in a building, the principal and the staff are, they're focused on the kids and how to handle the situation. The last thing they want to think about is, I gotta do this, this, this and this, and reach out to these people, alert these people. Really incident command needs to take over at that point and manage all that communication while they focus on the kids and uh do reunification. So we've got message boards, all view boards in the classrooms, which are these two big boards right up here. We have one of those in every classroom throughout the district, we have them in common areas, we have them in libraries. All of those become an endpoint in this mass communication system, so when we trigger a lockdown, modified lockdown. Those screens all turn red throughout the entire district or that building, depending on how we configure this, it's highly configurable on how we set this up. Um, but all those screens will turn red and it'll have a message on there that will go across all P A systems as well. You know, the building is locked, is in lockdown or shelter in place or modified lockdown. It'll be a unified message on those boards as well as uh the P A system. P A system will be the pre-recorded message stating what the event is and what actions to take. Uh, and that will all align with the standard response protocol. Uh, the P A systems that we are looking at doing, we're piloting in this building here. If you, uh after this meeting, if you go out in the hall, you'll notice there's a new clock out in the hallway here. And we have those throughout this entire building, um on the outside of e- every major entrance, we have blue show lights. Um, that is something that we are looking to do at schools as well to alert people in parking lots, if a lockdown occurs or. A modified lockdown, it lets people know when they're approaching the building, stay away. Uh, get in your car, leave the parking lot, um. And and that will be obviously different for students, we'll come up with how we handle students in parking lots and what what that looks like. Uh, but it just gets us a visual alert on the outside of the building. Uh, this new mass communication system can also, if you opt in with your cellular device, it can send you an alert as well. Um, one of the major things with any type of events in a school district, um. Usually I T and maintenance encounter this a lot, they'll be going out to a building to repair something and they don't know what's happening at that building. Because there's not a communication system that tells them what's happening. This system can send an alert to their phone to say, hey, you're, you're approaching Presswood Elementary, please stay away. This system can send an alert to their phone to say, hey, you're, you're approaching Presswood Elementary, please stay away, we're in modified lockdown. Or we are in a uh, a test lockdown right now, or we're doing fire drills. So what we're trying to do is automate a lot of that communication and turn really just about every device that we put in classrooms, uh, turn those into endpoints so we can get the message out quickly to all of those endpoints. So we're looking at doing flashing lights, visual alerts on the outside of the buildings. Uh, we are looking at all the screens throughout the buildings. Um, we are looking at in the future of the phone system, you can trigger an alert from the phone system. Uh, we can even uh have an audio message that comes across to all phones throughout the building as well as the PA system, as well as all the borders and all the flashing lights. So really uh, based on the type of event, we can lay out, here's the standard uh, set of communication that's going to go out for each type of event and replicate that across every school in the district. Uh, and that's highly tailorable to different grade levels, elementary schools, middle schools, high school. Uh, we can configure that any way um, we deem, you know, necessary. Uh, the, the PA system, we're going to tie into current PA systems that are in the buildings. Uh, so when you initiate a lockdown at a building or shelter in place, that PA system does the pre-recorded message. Uh, newer, some of the newer buildings have newer PA systems that have, already have strobes built into each classroom. So we'll, we'll initialize those, bring those into this new communication system. Uh, so we'll have visual alerts within the classroom uh. In, in addition to the board that we have. Uh, so we'll have some flashing strobes that really draw their attention up to the clock speaker. And on that clock speaker, there's a scrolling message of what's happening in the building as well as a pre-reported audio message. Um, the other cool thing with this system is we can automate, uh, let's say we've got uh, two schools on one campus, one goes into lockdown. We can automatically trigger a modified lockdown at the neighboring school. And then a message that can go out to administrators that says, hey, this is why this happened. Um, so we can, we can really secure campuses, schools and have these systems kind of automate all of that. So we're not picking up the radios or the phone and saying, hey, we just went into lockdown, you guys need to go into modified lockdown. It can all be automated. Um, and then testing. We thoroughly test those systems. We do safety tests every month uh, of different types of systems. Uh, IT staff will be on hand when we test these systems in the buildings uh, to make sure everything is functioning as we expect it to function. Um, and then relay any of that communication to uh building leadership, you know, hey, this is how the system functions. Uh, this is what you can expect when you do this, when you press this button, you can expect this to happen. Uh, so that's IT staff will be available to do that, make sure that things are running properly throughout the district. Uh, we've also done new radios in the district. Uh, this is another project, like I said, it wasn't supposed to start till twenty twenty-five, but we are implemented throughout the district. Uh, we're working on a few things of uh some coverage areas that um, may not be fully covered, but we are working on those and have a solution um in, in place within the next few weeks here. Uh, so those systems, we went from twenty channels on our previous radio system, so we now have ninety-six channels district-wide for communication. Uh, each school has three dedicated channels for general use. Uh, however they deem fit to use those channels within that building. Uh, we have a district-wide emergency all-call channel. All radios now can receive the all-call. Uh, the all-call overrides all current communications. So if you're uh, out at recess and you're talking about recess and things that are happening out there and an all-call goes out, your communication's cut off about what you're talking about and this broadcast message comes across your radio. So everybody gets the message all at one time. That's all handhelds and that's all base stations and all muscles. You know, this is an announcement as well. Uh, our CSOs have uh what's called ion radios. Uh, the ion radios, it's kind of like a a radio, but it's also a miniature computer in their hand. Uh, they can call nine one one from that, they can receive pushed video on that. So based off of triggers that we set up in the video system and in the access control system, they can get video of footage of something happening pushed right to their device. From that, they can see a description of, let's say we have somebody that shouldn't be in the building. Uh, from that description, we can search video footage and see, you know, where did the person go throughout the building? We can relay that information to law enforcement uh, and just really cut down response time and cut down on um minimizing damage that somebody may intend to do. Uh, so that's our, our new radio systems and everybody got new radios throughout the whole district. So phase three, we want to get all these systems working together and talking together and um programs to make our lives easier uh in terms of all of this mass amount of data when it comes to security and safety systems and really program some of this to do the work for us. These systems should work for us. Uh, so that's what phase three is really about.
I was just, Brad Smith, one comment. Uh, um, Keith talked about the neighboring schools and in, and everybody here knows we have lots of cluster schools. And, and that, that functionality is, is critical because um, time is of essence and being able to do that with modified lockdown in conjunction lockdown, probably tightly is huge because we do have, I mean, Bonnie Lake High School, Mount, ELC may belong, I mean, we, we call them cluster schools here because we, we're all aware of it. That's a huge functionality in itself, top of everything else that it covers is a great um piece added, so.
Yeah, Keith is pretty humble, but he came to us from Fife. And he built out the system that he has described with that district. And so they have everything that he has described is fully operational in, in that district. So if you know anybody in Fife, and here's certain, learning more about it, you could reach out to them and talk to them about it, but we're really fortunate to have Keith. And these two guys, awesome job. Thanks for being here um, and for your dedication. So as we wrap up, we want to remind the board that safety is linked to student performance, right? And so you can see the areas there. I know you've seen this slide before, so I'm just going to show it to you. Um, but it's hugely important to student performance. Benefiting parties, students, staff, families, community and society. So all this work that's going on by our teachers and our district leaders and our law enforcement partners and all the partners we work with in our community is so important to this, to this work. Uh, we also um wanted to remind the board about equity, uh, creating environments where every student feels valued, supported and safe. Okay. Wrapping up, uh, what's working well? Um, well, this is a highlight, right? Just the partnership that we have. Um, again, just super excited about it. Our fire partners, I put them in that category as well. We also meet with them. And just very, very fortunate um for the work that they do. They come in, they serve our district. They put on a big AED um, uh, presentation last year and a lot of people came to it. Um, and so that's just an example of how fire partners of this as well. Um, talk about the advisory council, the relationships with our community and our partners in the region. And um, I do want to end with this because I am extremely proud of the people that I work with. From business department, I see Bang over there and all of her folks, um, Emma and O, I talked about Dave and his team. Uh, transportation, I mean, everybody. Top-down. It's a, it's a privilege to work here and it's a, a place that I think has, not thing, I know has very high expectations. And it's a thrill to be a part of that and to see the work that goes on uh district-wide with that. So thank you for all the work um from those departments to help us with this. Okay, opportunities for improvement. These are the same slide, the same exact slide they showed you in March, but I want to give you an update. Okay, so I talked about student involvement in March. And so right now we are underway, are to be fair, I know this is publicized and it's on, it's being recorded. But we had our first meeting with um Celsa Rangel, who is the state director, reports directly to the governor of the state of Washington. And um, he goes around the state um and teaches CERT. CERT stands for Community and Receiver Response Team. Well, turns out we have a whole contingent of people in both of our communities. Um, in fact, we got a fireman, I think Bill knows pretty well, his name is Brian, lives up in Tallal. Um, he's a program manager and a, a trainer for CERT. And he's part of our team. So we've had one meeting already. Our goal is to launch an interest meeting um, with Bonnie Lake High School and Southern High School students to see if we can generate some interest. Being forty-five minutes as a crow flies from pretty big volcano and all the potential nastre, natural disaster threats and so on, we think this is kind of important. So Celsa donated sixty bags to our district, thirty for each high school. Um, we'll see how many kids are interested. We're still planning. Um, it's a ways out. We're not going to start it next week or even next month. Maybe next year, right? So there's a lot of planning that goes into it, but want to let you know about that. Way for our kids to be involved in this work. And then we've talked about the community involvement. We're in the second year of our district safety advisory council, excited about that work. And then safety committee, Cheryl Collins and myself. Uh, there are others in this room that um meet on a regular basis uh with site reps and we talk about safety. Some of it's kind of boring to be honest, but it's important because it's all about uh physical safety and, and, and that's good stuff. So. We'll stop talking, see what questions you might have.
Right, uh. Um, I just want to acknowledge that Karen Lewis, I believe, is on Zoom and so, I mean, please speak up if you have any questions as well. But any questions, comments from the board?
Yeah.
No need to call them.
Um, probably about four or five, but I think other people should have a shot at asking questions before I begin. Yeah, I'll, I'll answer one of yours. I'll do one at a time.
There you go.
We'll start off um with this one. I think uh, it said something about bus pass. Is that being pivoted or is that all through the, the district now that a student has a little pass?
We are piloting this, okay.
Which schools are piloting?
Uh, I don't have the specifics on it, but we, I can get that information for you. Uh, we are looking at piloting that uh potentially going district-wide, but that is a system that we look at can integrate into this mass communication system as well. Uh, so that we know uh where kids are, are they at school? If something should happen at a building and there's reunification, we can use those systems to uh, extract all information of who's at school that day uh and where they are. Um, so we're just looking at these different systems and how do we integrate them like in together?
Do you have an idea of the number of students?
Uh, that I don't. I think I can get you that information though. Did you?
I know, a little bit. So last spring, there were some classrooms, I believe, different for Emporil and Liberty Ridge. And then now they've expanded it from just classrooms to schools. Um, so I believe there the reason is it's badging with bus kids. So last year, and I'm not sure if it's the whole school, but they just increased the number of they started with classrooms and going to more classrooms and then eventually whole schools just work out. And you'll see some of the badging going on with some of these other schools. I believe Liberty Ridge was doing some badging with just kinders or different grade levels, but just kind of slow rolling the piloting to increase the number.
Okay. Do the parents get a push notification, like when the kid or student arrives at school or is it, that's not it?
You, you can do that, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would be uh when we're piloting a system like that. Uh, we verify first and foremost it does what we think it will do and then we'll implement the next feature, you know, like the next feature would be alerting parents with their kids. And making sure that that portion of it's working.
So, and this is a, a great story about the project. So we had a moment with transportation where we're missing a kinder. And that badging basically identified the kinder not getting on the bus and then us communicating to both the parents within minutes that the kinder didn't get on the bus because we hadn't badged the kinder. And the kinder was in right at school. And they were able to do that within minutes, but a lot of times we're running around trying to make multiple, but there's just that badging system that didn't get on the bus.
Right at school, maybe right at school.
Yeah.
I think it's good to pilot, make sure this is good.
Other questions?
I, I have a question. First of all, thank you very much. Um, this was great and, and I really appreciate it. I have a little bit of a question about around that. I love the, the SRO and the CSO um collaboration and work, I guess. And this is my, I, I'm naive still to it, but I guess I thought you guys were stationed at high schools, but it sounds like if you were at Baffett that you guys move around to different schools. How do you like determine where you're going to be and, and, and how, how does that?
Um, I try to spend a lot of my time at the high school and middle schools just because that's where because the kids are older and they start to like, like each other. Um, just our presence can de-escalate a lot of the situations from ever even happening because of the, I'm not going to go confront Ricky because there's a cop right there. Um, that's and as kids get older, they have different experiences and they need to talk to a police officer, but it's not so much um as prevalent at elementary. So I do try to center my time around the high schools and middle schools most and then hop into the elementaries routinely um for recess to, you know, focus on that relationship building uh more so. With the littles there. But it's kind of discretionary. Sometimes we'll get a bunch of calls and we can't make it, we can only make it to one school that day or um, we'll be working on something and so it's, a lot of it's discretionary and um just kind of what comes out of that day.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, just kind of going, what he was saying, you know, it's, I let you look at that. What's the need? And then I look at like, you know, whether it's traffic safety, um, and then I look at like uh optics, you know, the community, because we want to make sure the community feels safe, can live safely without fear, right? You know? Um, but, and then we also look at relationships, because I think that's the biggest part, meaning when you have those, put relationships as a priority. It makes the safety and security and everything else better. So kind of how I divide up my time is, well, this is a week and two days, right? But I've had a lot of thought within the years, you know, uh, you know, like how I do this, but you know, he was saying, the adolescent brain is to get some middle school stuff, kids, you know, more, more freedoms and start getting, you know, I think that's an important, really important age, but I kind of divide it up, like I start my mornings off with going down to, you know, the high school and the, or the middle school where kids are getting dropped off or coming to school and then now after that I'll go up to the elementaries, you know, just presence, you know, smiles. Do presence, smile and then um from there kind of look at, you know, where the safety needs, where we, where we had some issues. So like you say, it's pretty discretionary. Time on this, but.
Yeah. Well, thank you guys. I appreciate, you know, what, I mean, learning more about it. Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
Wow. Well, first of all, thank all of you, Brian, great job. Uh, with your working with the city's uh Southern Bonnie Lake uh, board of directors with a lot of help from other people in the district and, and, you know, from mayors, council members, attorneys, things like that. Everybody was so uh positive about making sure this could happen. Sure, there's a question about why not Pierce County? Representative Pierce County, can someone speak to that?
I can. Yeah, so uh Dr. Men and I have been uh working with Pierce County Sheriff's Department. Uh, we have four county schools. Uh, they're Presswood, Liberty Ridge, Tallal and, and Donald Island. And right now, as Bill's pointing out, um, they fall outside our cities. And part of the challenge with Pierce County um Sheriff's Department is, um, and I've gotten educated over the last year on this topic. We have a detachment um up off two fourteen. And they have six hundred square miles to cover. They come from Greenwater all the way to the other side of Graham. And on any shift, we have five officers to cover those six hundred square miles. So you can imagine the challenge and the difficulty of that. Um, and it's, you know, it's, let's be honest, it's budgets. And that's what it is. So what we've done is we've, and Dr. Men started it before I um got involved. Um, we've been
We've been negotiating with the sheriff's department to come up with a, it's called an off-duty contract. And so the way it would work is we would identify the hours for the week. The time period we'd want them to be there because we would want it to be consistent, much like it is for our two departments here representing. And they would serve those four county schools. That would be their job. They'd be uniformed. They would be armed. They would be in their patrol cars. But they would be working basically overtime. This is what it amounts to. So we're kind of in the throes of that process. I hope within a month or so or two months, we'll see what happens. Because there's a lot that needs to happen, right? They're taking every our request through their legal department because there's a process there. And then once we get it, we got to take it through our process.
The other realities of it's they they have always been interested. It's a shortage. So they and within the last year, I mean, the first approach was can can you do an SRO for, you know, our county's schools? And they were definitely interested. They're short, still short. And then the other option is can we do off-duty and rotating people? And that's tough too because they those officers have already worked a full day and they're piggybacked. So then they have to get rotation. So then they have to do that. So that's the reality is it's a shortage. There isn't any lack of people not wanting to engage and participate. They were super excited, but that's kind of weird.
Can I ask you a question?
I have another question. Keith, I'm like overwhelmed by all of what you're talking about and somehow I've been visioning some like, you know, command central. This some enormous thing with all these buttons and coordinating all these things. And one of the things that I am interested in is you try to coordinate like it sounds like the the radios and things have like that's one of the central pieces. Are those coordinated with the SROs too or?
Yeah, thanks for I should have brought that up. We did it with both of our SROs with it's it's called the R seven. It's a step down from the ION that Keith talked about. The ION is very high functioning with it. It's basically a smartphone in a radio. These guys carry a lot of gears, you can see. And so I don't have an ION here, which I did. It's a big unit. And so they're like, yeah, we don't really. So they have stepped down and the step down is still got a display screen. It's what our principals carry. I I well, we have four of them here in district. I actually carry an ION myself. But the biggest difference really is they don't have a smartphone feature and they don't. They're not going to give those clips of video that Keith talked about. But they'll get everything else. They're going to get all the alerts. They'll get the, there's a panic button on those radios. So if nobody can talk, they can hit this button on radio systems and it alerts a team. And if we don't hear back from them, we call them one one immediately. Okay. So yeah, they they carry that. So they are part of.
That's great. Yeah, because I think you hear so often that the communication sometimes between different departments. And, you know, isn't very good. So it's great that that's connected. Yeah.
Sorry, it's on the radio.
I still command central there and I'm a little overwhelmed by all of it, but yeah, it's great.
It it kind of is like a command simple, but it's it's designed, tested, invented to be highly functioning and to minimize time things. So that people can focus on the event that is happening and getting kids safe and not focusing on that communications. This system can do a lot of that communication behind the scenes for you. So it's going to take some planning and us sitting down and going over, you know, when this event happens, what do who would want to have that message communicated to? And when, because it can do it at stages as well. It can do it, you know, right away. These people are alerted. Thirty minutes later, these people are alerted. So we can, we can tailor this system to fit on these.
There's a lot of it. It's a lot of it building specific to start with that, you know, that
Yes.
You can isolate.
Yeah, it's a building specific as well as let's say, for example, you trigger a lock building. Some of the actions that we can do is we can, for communications, we can alert all CSOs in the district. We can alert super agenda, we can alert communications, we can alert our SROs. All of them can receive a message saying, you know, hey, this just happened at this building. The system can even go as far as automating some communications to their parents. But again, we we start with our four basic functionality. And then with our safety committee, we we identified features that we want to enable and and
Thank you. Got another decade.
I'm having a phone.
Go ahead, Gavin.
All right, thanks. Greetings from afar. Yeah, I'm above you on the speaker. It was it's on Zoom. Sometimes a little hard to hear everything, so forgive me if this was covered, but I just you talked a lot about, first of all, thank you for the great presentation. Thank you for all the great work you're doing. Very much appreciated as far as the safety of our district. My question had to do with when you were speaking about the radios and the triggering of calls to to law enforcement and that's the thing. And in recently, one of the unfortunate school shootings that we had, it was talked about in some of the news articles that teachers had a triggering device that they could trigger from their classroom with different ways of of different levels of trigger. Is that part of the system too that this this triggering of event would go all the way down to the teacher level?
So our our new technique is we are going to upgrade in-class audio systems. Some of our newer buildings already have this capability, but from the teacher's microphone, they can trigger an alert. Right, right from the hotel mic, the mic that they wear around their neck. There's a button combination you can press that you can trigger that alert. That can go to central office. We can even automate things like hall cameras to push footage from that specific area to administrators so they see an outside view of a hallway of that classroom. So we can automate a lot of that, but yes, a teacher can trigger an alert that can also trigger a lockdown at a building. And that will tie into this whole system. And that's
Yeah, that sounds, that's kind of sounds exactly like what I was hearing about that they really attributed the reaction time to the fact that the teacher was able to to trigger it at that level. So, thank you. That was the only question I had.
All right, I'll stay on the topic. You guys are all PAs and stuff like that. You, Keith, you said it was going to be in phase three. About when would phase three start and when is it expected to be considered?
Oh, we are starting portions of phase three now. We have the pilot system in this building. We are just finishing up the last few speaker installs. This is something that you know, I tip my hat to our IT team because we we installed all this ourselves within the building. And that that saved a tremendous amount of money on install and everything else, but this is our pilot location. The reason it's our pilot location, we're housed here. It's easier for us to test on nights and weekends and not interrupt the school. So we can go through and thoroughly test all these functionalities, vet the system, work out any bugs that we find in the system. And really, once you get that done, you can basically extrapolate all those settings to so that from that point on, then it's just kind of a a trickle effect out to the other schools. And as we roll bring a school on this new system, we will go out there and test that system as well. Nights and weekends, we'll alert the community that, hey, we're going to do a lockdown test at this building. Expect this, expect loud noises and sirens and flashing lights. So we will roll that out. That will be probably one to two years to roll that out throughout the district. There are things that we have to look at with levy dollars and cash flow and how we roll out some of the in-class audio systems. So the goal is to get buildings that already have the systems in place. Get this unification built immediately and enable those capabilities. The buildings that still need install of stuff, those will be the buildings that will come in steps of phase three.
I'll do a follow-up question. Because that was my next question, but it pertains to this as well. You mentioned, you know, budgets. And so when we passed our technology I was always kind of one of the understandings, you know, for some security things. But in Chromebooks, but what you have been describing is so much more beyond what I really thought. Are we going to have money to maintain it? It's always needs maintenance, needs training, you know. So or it's or it's something that budget-wise, we got the money to do it, but then when we go back out for tech levy, we could roll some of that stuff in or what can be put into it, describe that to me.
So every system that we are rolling out, we look at it from a lens of how do we first and foremost, enrich a classroom, enrich the learning environment. And then what are the security implications of that system? These are systems that we have already planned on implementing, like the in the new in-class audio systems. That's in the tech. It just so happens that we can integrate that into this mass communication system as well. There are native security features that come with it. The company that designs the system has recognized, you know, the importance of safety and how quick it how those critical seconds and minutes to initiate an alert or a lockdown. They need to put the that control in the hands of some of the teachers as well. So they they just these features are already in the systems. We're very mindful of the systems that we bring into the district of how does this also tie into safety as well? Like PA systems, that is in our tech levy that was recently passed, you know, upgrading PA systems, upgrading the audio systems in the classrooms. So all that's kind of tied in there as well as maintaining those systems. When we costed out those systems throughout the district, we also added in maintenance and repair and placement of, you know, failed systems as well as we negotiate with our partners, you know, whether it be the vendors or suppliers of the equipment to get the most warranty that we can out of the equipment. And support for them to come in and repair or replace as well.
Well, thank you. Great answers on both of them. And I'm glad that foresight you guys had to put that technology request where we put it out to the voters was all there. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Keith.
Any other questions?
Got one more question, sorry. With the recent, you know, hacking situation in in Highline, how do I'm sure like how vulnerable it's like this be to something like that?
A system like this. The system itself, so there are, you take all these systems, you make them as a collective security ecosystem. It's important that you build controls into all of the disparate systems themselves. And that you have your APIs, which is what's what it uses to communicate between all these systems, standard API. That you're building in layers of security and defense there. And you're also building in monitoring and alerts for that. Something that we do on a regular basis here is monitoring alerts. I get alerts throughout the entire night on my phone of, hey, a student just logged in from this country. Or a staff member just logged in here or an account has been added to this specific security group within the district and it has these privileges. So we monitor all of that on a regular basis and act accordingly. We even have systems set up to act on our behalf. If it meets these conditions, automatically do this until security personnel can look at it and analyze the event. So building in controls of all of that. What's important to understand in our current threat landscape is if an advanced persistent threat wants to get in, they're going to get in. There's not a whole lot you can do. You can do due diligence and protect your systems, make sure you're updating them, patching them. But if somebody really wants to get in, they can get in. I I see the alerts all night of, you know, FBI got hacked, CISA got hacked. I mean, it's happening. The best thing we can do is have a plan in place of how do we recover? And what systems do we need to recover to get back to business as usual? So building this business impact analysis, taking that to leadership and saying, okay, here's what technology thinks. How does this align with our organizational goals and what systems do you prioritize? And then we build our recovery plan based off of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it's it's really impressive.
Good hands.
Earlier, very thorough plan and well thought out and communicated to us tonight. So thank you very much. Kevin, just checking in with you. You good?
I am all good. Thank you.
Just one easy one. For the clear basket or the clear backpacks for football games. You know, always springs to mind is I'm glad you guys are doing it. And then you're going to, you have a plan to roll it out to other sports, but why just varsity?
Why just football?
Well, just varsity. I mean, why not JV as well? These are
Yeah, it's a really, it's a really good question. We looked at it through the lens. We'd love to do it everywhere. But it has to do with where we have our event staff. So when you those that have run buildings in the room here know that you can put all kinds of things in place, but if you can't enforce it, you can't staff it, then it's kind of like an empty promise. Because there's it, we don't want that optic in our community. If we say that we're going to enforce their bags at a venue, then we're going to do our level best to do that with fidelity. The problem with JV and freshman games because that they the staffing there is so minimal that it's really difficult to to do it with fidelity. I guess that's probably the best way to describe it. That said, we're running this, you know, with football first. We're going to roll basketball up next year and we're going to see how it goes. You know, as I mentioned earlier, we're a district that prides itself on pursuing excellence. And we are also talking to our league. We want our league to do it in force. Right now, we have one other school district, Bethel, that does it, that we know about. But we are pressing on the rest of the SPSL to say, hey, it's gone pretty well. How about we all do it? Because that makes it more friendly for all of our fans as they travel back and forth to sites. If it's happening everywhere, then it becomes the norm. And then maybe we can start looking at other games and and
Like you said, if it becomes the norm, they might just be doing it.
This brings us to the board discussion portion of our study session. I mean, want to have any topics for discussion? I'm seeing Bill.
I was, I was going to ask following the Highline situation.
Just in general, I mean, informing the community, I think I think the community be impressed to see these kinds of things. I particularly like this one. I mean, if we could get the hands, this into the hands of parents and community members, I think they taking it serious. I realize it's always difficult to get communication out to voters and and people that don't have kids in the system. Sometimes questioned. Well, districts doing it, but they don't know. And I know we've struck calendars. And I say that because, you know, we're getting set to take my daughter up to Udo. And she actually said, man, I wish I had a calendar to hang on the wall. And she does everything on her phone. But I mean, I think a school district one might, I should like that better.
About you, Kevin? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah.